Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comments. Okay, so there'll be no board discussion of public comments. So if the, you're gonna have an English Language Arts presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all yours. I'm gonna get out of yours. I always need that.
And do you wanna do that?
I can do that.
Sure. All right. All right, I'll introduce you.
Okay, sure.
All right. Because some of the board members might not know Andrea Clinch has been with us. This is her second year as a reading specialist, grades four through eight. She's a wonderful addition to our staff. Amanda Przybalski is, many of you have known her in different positions. She was a second grade teacher, special education case manager for K-1.
K-1.
K-1 for two years.
Yes.
And then we had our K-3 reading specialist leave last school year. She had been in the program to be a reading specialist and has just a small amount, one class left to do. So we have her in the role as a reading interventionist. And she and Andrea have worked really hard on this presentation. They have worked all year long with the ELA committee as they're preparing the curriculum to be presented to the school board. Next school year, it was due this year, but being so new, both of them. And I also want to make sure I introduce Julianne Bourgeois. Julianne is also a reading interventionist at our K-3 level and has been with us seven years, because I've been here for seven years. I believe that was your first year. So Julianne and Amanda and Andrea work very closely together. Julianne is a note taker extraordinaire at all PLCs. Thank goodness. And really captures what happens at our meetings. And it's a pleasure to have all three of them here to present to you the ELA curriculum or ELA information and data. Go ahead and hit the curtain, girls. Yeah.
Wow, this is fancy. All right. So we've been introduced, but we're here to talk to you about literacy in general at DCS across the grades K to 8. We have a bit of an outline for you. It's got a lot of details in it, and this will be shared with you. So if you wanted to go back at some point and look at something in particular, you might want to read this in detail. But in summary, we're gonna talk about writing at DCS. We're gonna talk a little bit about reading. And then two pieces at the end. One is a conventions competency for the middle school, which we're gonna present to you tonight for your approval. And the other is our next steps goal, and if you have any questions. That being said, you can ask questions at any time. So we've had a lot of time to digest some of this information, but we've had a lot of time to do it. So feel free to ask any questions that you have. What we're gonna present to you first is just a theoretical model for the science of writing. I think you've heard of the science of reading. I know we're also gonna share that information with you, but we opted to start with writing because we're gonna talk about the program that we've adopted. So we have two things for you here. One is the simple view of writing, and it's composition times transcription equals skilled writing. And the importance of this formula is that you have to have both in order to be a skilled writer. You can't have one without the other. So if you don't have composition and you can't generate and organize ideas, that times transcription is still nothing. So both of those pieces are really important. The second thing is this over here, which is the writing rope. And it is from Joan Cedita. She is a person who has written quite a bit extensively, but she has written the Keys to Comprehension book that we use here at school. But this is her model for all the different strands of writing instruction that are important, that need to be woven together in order for someone to be a skilled writer. So the program that we chose and started this summer, past summer, and actually implemented more specifically this fall, is called Simplify Writing. And we wanted to tell you why we chose it. A few of the reasons are the alignment that it has. It does align with the science of writing model. It does align with the standards, Common Core standards, and with the science of reading. It's a program that runs K through 8, which is nice because we are a K to 8 school, so we get alignment across all of the grade levels. It has built-in teacher training modules. There are eight of them, and each of them have different components within them. And we've used them to introduce staff to how to use this program as best they can. We've gotten through most of the modules. We have a few more to do, but it's nice because you can go back and look at them as many times as you need to, to get the information that you need. This program was used by some staff during COVID. And when I first started last year, I pulled together grade-level teams and met with them and talked to them about writing and what they were doing and how it was going. And this program came up a number of times. And we were able to talk about it. We were able to look at it a little bit. We started looking mostly at the grammar component, which some teachers tried a little bit of and liked. And so I was able to share it with slowly, 4th through 8th grade. And teachers had a chance to look at it, talk about it, ask questions. And then it kind of spread down to 3rd grade, and then to 2nd, and then to 1st, and then to K, with teachers having a chance to look at it first before committing to do it. And by the end of the school year, last year, everyone was on board, all grade levels, K to 8.
By choice.
By choice, yeah. And so Kristin had, I think, Esther money. And so we were able to purchase licenses. It's individual licensing per teacher, and the license is good for three years. And I think it was like $250 per person. Teacher moves, they can transfer to a different grade. The licenses are our schools, and they can be assigned to anyone. So there was a lot of excitement about something that could be uniform across the school. We did a survey of literacy at our school. We sent it out to 37 teachers and case managers, and we had 25 people respond. One of the questions we asked was, how satisfied are you with the program? One being the least, five being the most. Most people, over 87 people, rated it either a 3, 4, or 5. Eighty-seven percent, yes, thank you. So a lot of, a lot of good feedback about that.
Out of the 25.
I was wondering about grade level. Was there any difference in grade level as to what the scores were? Like, did you find certain grades rated at higher than others?
Oh, I don't think we noticed that.
I don't think that we did, no.
We probably could figure it out if you wanted us to.
You don't need to get back to me about that. But I was just thinking that would be interesting to see if it was
A middle school.
Among all grade levels.
Levels, yeah.
Yeah.
I think when I share some of the individual testimonials and some of the feedback, that will help to explain which grade levels were, how people were feeling at different grade levels. These comments are directly from them as far as, and these were common themes that we found in the comments that people felt were strengths of this program. Because it is so organized and simple, it's really helpful for teachers that are newer or even content teachers at our middle school level that maybe only teach science or math as their main subject, but they're also social studies teachers, right? So that was one thing that people liked. Another is that the lessons are focused, they're simple, and they're sequential. The third thing was there was a lot of, there are a lot of graphic organizers, editing, and revision checklists. And those are consistent across grade levels. They do shift and change developmentally for kids. But once kids, by the time they get to 3rd or 4th grade, see what it looks like for the introduction, and there's always a checklist on the top of it, it's pretty similar across grade levels. And so you don't have that constant reteaching that's needed. All of the lessons are pre-made, and there's a digital component to them, and they can be posted to Google Classroom. So teachers that teach middle school really like that component because they can send out assignments. All teachers can post anything onto their smart TV for students to see models of writing or the lesson, whatever it is that they're doing. So that's a nice component. The slideshows that are sent out to students or that you use in your classroom are interactive. There are grammar lessons for grades K through 8. And when you purchase the program, like as a 3rd through 8th grade teacher, you get all the grammar for all grades 3 through 8. So you can look for the skills that are specific to your grade level, but also other skills if you have students that need to work on other things. And they're so nice. You click on it, it says, you know, parts of speech, and there's seven days' worth of lessons. They're all done, they're sequenced, they're organized. You can choose maybe intermediate, or beginner, or basic, or advanced. And it's really nice to have that at your fingertips.
Great for differentiation.
Yeah. There's also an intervention library, which is set up based on different types of areas where students may need some more support, like how to focus, a focus within a writing piece or
Sentence writing.
Paragraph writing, organization, essay writing, those kinds of things. And there are lessons that are already done for that as well, that you can easily pull and give to large group, your whole group. It could be just a small group. And our case managers have this program as well. They each have their own license, and they were part of the training so that they're able to access that library. And we get that cross-coverage between the classroom and what the special educators are doing with students. Yeah.
So on the intervention library, say that, you guys are not a science teacher. Say I decide to do a persuasive essay in my class. I can go to that. So everybody's writing persuasive essays the same way? Does it have that kind of thing, or?
Well, actually, yeah, there actually would be, there are 10 units. And in the upper grades, I think there's four that are, they're called argumentative. One is science, one's social studies, one's analysis, and then there's a more generic one. But that's all laid out in a pretty substantial lesson plan.
Part of the curriculum.
Yeah.
But you could use it for like whatever you happen to be teaching at the time. The content, you can use that.
Within the intervention lessons as well. Yes.
Absolutely.
Yep. Great resource.
There's also one, it's a, it's considered an ELL resource, but it's really related a lot to language. And so if you have students with, any student working on language skills, that is helpful as well.
Do we know why a third of the teachers and case managers didn't respond?
No.
We don't, and we haven't presented this to them yet in its entirety. We, of course, see them every six days for PLCs. And I know I've at least talked to one group who said, oh, yeah, I forgot to do that. So, you know.
Yeah, just, that's a significant number.
Yeah. We did get an
We sent numerous emails, just saying. Intervention at PLCs.
That being said, all the ELA teachers at 6, 7, and 8, most all of the 5th, 4th, 3rd grade teachers responded. Second did as well.
I think all of elementary. K, 1, 2, 3. I think I got all of the elementary.
And I got all 4 and 5, and a case manager. And we got a couple of science teachers at the upper levels. So, you know, it's not terrible.
Oh, maybe, maybe more, when you're saying out of 37 teachers, that that includes all the teachers in the school?
Need all the teachers in the school, all professional staff.
Teachers math and say, I don't really need to do this.
Well, that's true too. Like, the music teachers didn't respond.
Right, okay. Right. All right, so that would make sense why there'd be less.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
The PE did not, exactly.
Okay.
So what is a PLC? Professional learning community, professional learning.
Yes, yeah. It's where we hold our meetings with our teams.
Did you say, is that once?
Yes, six days.
Once every six days.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And so we have a chance to meet with the entire teaching team for that grade level, as well as the case manager. Usually Kristin is there, or Brian, or Lisa as an administrator. And we have an agenda that we work towards each week. And that's how we kind of move things forward in lots of many ways in regards to what we're doing with the curriculum.
And data.
And data.
A lot of data discussions.
So here's some specific teacher feedback to let you know what teachers were not completely satisfied with. And we looked at as, these are our next steps, right? So now we know we've gone through our first year, and everybody one has had a chance to use it. This is what we need to do next. So one of the first was that it's so well-scaffolded for support that it's hard to know what kids are really doing independently. And so we know that we need to build in more opportunities for independent writing, as well as a more consistent pre- and post-assessment system. When we first bought Simplify Writing, there was no pre- or post-assessment. There was a general pre-assessment to look at foundational skills that kids had, but that was it. In April, they came out with all the pre- and post-assessments for every grade, for every type of writing. So now that we have that, that will be a little bit easier, I think, to implement. So that's our plan. Some people were concerned that the mentor texts are too complicated. Those are the texts that come with each writing unit that show the students what the writing should look like. And sometimes they can be complex, some teachers felt. So we'll remind them they can use the text leveler and AI to change it, to make it a little simpler. Some teachers are providing their own, using AI or just creating their own. So there are some ways around that. One comment was around student choice and voice. And I'll work with that grade-level team to create different options for students, so that they can do more of that. Some said that it was hard to use the slides because they're meant to be editable, which allows a teacher to take the framework and make it specific to her or him. And the reason we haven't been able to do it is because we're not all using Microsoft, it's on PowerPoint. So that's just a tech issue that we need to get solved and give training. And the last one is the need for foundational skills in the upper grades. So students hit beyond 4th and 5th grade, they may not be really good spellers. They may not be really good at forming sentences and writing and organizing their thoughts. And so we're gonna continue to work with case managers and specialists and the intervention library to build foundational skills. So these are some of the testimonials. You can see what teachers liked. There's two primary teachers in that first box. They did like that it gave students some direction, but it encourages productive struggle and the use of creativity. Student engagement has been really good. On the bottom, the two primary teachers, that it's much more appropriate and realistic than what they'd been using before for writing. And it's also more developmentally appropriate for kindergartners. There's a big, big program in the kindergarten that really, like, how do kids hold their pencils? And how do they form their letters? And there's a lot of work to build those very, very early skills. And teachers do lots of observation and checklists to work on those skills.
Which is something they absolutely love.
An upper elementary teacher said the students are showing visible growth. And a middle school teacher said the students appreciate the resources, the color coding, and the writing in bite-sized pieces. So a little smattering from across. This is an informational writing post-assessment for 5th grade. And I just wanted you just to look at it. I'm not gonna read it, but I wanted you to see what our 5th grade has been doing. They chose to teach both informational writing for science and informational writing for social studies. When they were finished with that, they presented kids with some topics to write about and expected them to write independently. I think they gave the kids two or three days. They had all the same resources to use. So they had the planning pages, they have the drafting pages, they have the checklist for revising and editing. And this is what students created. That first one is about axolotls. And this one is about the colonists of Roanoke. And they're both, they were both scored as a level 3, which is proficient. This is the rubric that students can use. It's in student-friendly language. The teachers have one that's just a little fancier, but it's the same set of skills. They also have a revision checklist, which includes these items to make sure as they finish up their writing that they've included the things that are required of them. And those rubrics are for every type of writing for every grade level. I had built this before I knew that the pre- and post-assessments from Simplify Writing had come in. But this was a sample of what I was attempting to do with some of the data from 5th grade, was to break it apart by type of writing and area. So the first two slides are the focus area on the rubric. And students did receive a score of 1 through 4. And then they took the social studies one, and the hope was that there was some improvement because that was 6 to 8 weeks later. Simplify Writing has come out with something almost very similar to let you keep track of really what's going to be a massive amount of data. Because if you have five areas and at least three kinds of writing, that's a lot of data. So we will be introducing that to the teachers next year.
So if I'm reading that correctly, say the first one on the left, there would, there are only three students who did better on the social studies than they did on the science? You've got two twos that went to 3, and a 3 that went to a 4, right?
Yep.
And then you have two students who did worse?
Yep.
And the zero might just be they didn't do the assignment.
I believe they didn't do the assignment, yeah. Yep, exactly. Writing is a very, very complex skill, and it takes a lot of time to develop.
Yeah, and it depends on what you're writing on. And if you like it, the topic and all that, yeah, I get that.
There's a lot of different pieces. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think we're hoping to look at data over multiple years to hopefully see some growth, so.
That's cool, though. I really like that. It's so much work.
This is some of the K through 3 data collection.
Yeah, so initially, like Andrea said, we started with a lot of observational data. So you can see up top handwriting foundations, paper positioning, writing posture, print concepts, and then letter formation. So this was what our data sheet looked like for the grade levels K to 2. And it was observational. So the teachers would go around, a lot of them asked for, like, each trimester, they wanted to have a repeat of that, you know, data or that data sheet, so that they could say, okay, this trimester, they got it. This, they're still working on these things. The next trimester to show that growth. And then we started to begin to talk about, all right, let's come up with a data collection sheet that's going to be, because they were looking for that, not only the foundational skills, but also data from their narrative writing, from their opinion writing, and from their informational writing. So we started to design something. And then, of course, you know, we found out that Simplify came out with these beautiful data sheets. And so we will be introducing them. But this is a sample of how it could potentially look. So we'll be playing around with those and talking to the teachers and coming up with the best way for our school. And this here is just a grade 1 rubric. So you can see the format is very similar. This is the teacher version, not the student-friendly. Our first graders, that wouldn't be the best checklist for them. But it's just to show you that, you know, it's very similar across the grade level. So they'll be familiar with this format going through 8th grade.
This is linked, but we don't actually even have to really show it. We just, we put the link to the SAS scores because our hope is that this presentation will also, either in this form or slightly modified, get shared with staff. And eventually, as we continue to update it, we'll be able to show updated SAS scores. And so that's another place where we're gonna see writing. That's really the one place, other than what we do, where writing is tested. We also use the iReady platform for testing, but it does not include writing. So SAS is really the only assessment for writing outside of what we do in school. That's why that's there. So that kind of is like the wrap-up to science of writing, Simplify Writing, and where we're at with it. Does anybody have any questions before we switch to the science of reading?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask another question. So say that, are the lessons so prescribed that they're telling the kids what to write about? Or is it, because I, because I like integrated units, where you can pick a theme and you're kind of doing it and all of those things. Does it allow you to do that?
It does. I mean, they're definitely set up to have a specific mentor text and all the lessons that go with it using that mentor text. But let's say it's in science. In 4th grade, it was natural disasters, I think it was. But that was, it actually fit with what they were doing. Yeah. I'm trying to think of a better example. In 6th grade, they write an informational essay about ancient Egypt, but that's not the informational essay topic in Simplify Writing. But it is completely manageable to shift it.
About it, you can change the topic.
Absolutely, you can change it.
That's the one thing I always have concern about.
Of course.
Boxed programs, you know? Like, it doesn't allow you to integrate amongst the other subjects, which is better for the kids, and plus they love it.
Yes. Yeah. That was really a key part of this program, fitting well with Deerfield, because
It does integrate the science and the social studies. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. So the science of reading. This is more known, I guess. And as we started to write the curriculum, this became a very big part of it. And it has slowed us down a little bit. And I think it's okay because we're learning more and more about the science of reading and how that's gonna impact our curriculum. So we wanted to share a little bit with you about what that is. So the science, has anybody heard of the science of reading? A little bit, maybe? Okay, it's okay that you haven't. I hadn't for a long time. But some people say, oh, we're gonna do the science of reading program. And so that's not really what the science of reading is. So we want to define it for you. This definition came from the Reading League. It says, "The science of reading is a vast interdisciplinary body of scientifically-based research about reading and the issues related to reading and writing. The research has been conducted around the world over the last 50 years." I know it includes many, many meta-analyses of data. Thousands of studies have been done in multiple languages. "It's culminated in a preponderance of evidence to inform how proficient reading and writing develop, why some have difficulty, and how we can most effectively assess and teach, and therefore improve student outcomes through prevention of and intervention for reading difficulties." So that is a basic definition. The next page goes over what it is and what it is not. This is from the National Center on Literacy. And what it is, is a collection of research. It's teaching based on five big ideas, which are phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. So as we're putting together a reading program, those are the parts that are included. And it's ever-evolving. There's always new research and more being added. What it is not is a specific program or a specific intervention. You can't just buy the science of reading and do it in your school.
Guess it'd be nice if you could.
I know. It's not just a phonics-based program that drills phonics skills. Phonics is definitely an integral part of the program, but it's just one of the five big ideas that are covered. And it's not complete. More studying needs to be done. This is two models of the science of reading, which mirrors the science of writing models. The first one is the simple view of reading. And it is word recognition times language comprehension equals reading comprehension. And so again, word recognition. If students aren't able to decode words, then, but maybe have good language comprehension, they are not gonna have good reading comprehension. It's really the sum, the product of those two skills, not the sum of them, to really have students become proficient. This rope is Scarborough's reading rope. And it mirrors that. There's language comprehension strands and word recognition strands. And the language comprehension pieces, kids become more strategic in using their comprehension skills, their language, their reasoning.[1753.71] And their word recognition is the phonological awareness, the decoding, the sight words. And as they become more automatic, those two weave together to create skilled reading, which is kids being able to fluently read, recognize words, and to comprehend.
That was perfect.
Thanks Scarborough.
She's talking.
Thanks, Mr. Scarborough.
Yeah, right?
Okay, so what we wanted to do is look at what are we doing already in Deerfield that does align with the Science of Reading? And so we took the two ropes, this is the language comprehension rope, the next slide is going to be word recognition. And on the left-hand side, you can see the five different areas. And then we said, well, what are we doing already, right? So one of the main areas under language comprehension is background knowledge. And I want to talk just briefly about that because it's not just the experiences that kids come to school with. Those are important as well, but it's also just the knowledge that they learn as they learn, as they read, and they're exposed to different concepts and facts. And so in thinking about the Science of Reading, a goal is to create depth of concepts across a school. So we're doing that now through Read Aloud and content building in Science and Social Studies. Another is vocabulary knowledge, again, content through science and social studies and picture books. Our upper grades, six, seven, use a program called Growing Your Vocabulary. The eighth grade teacher has created one based on the same types of words and good morphology instruction. And then I mentioned Joan Sedida before, she had written Keys to Comprehension, which is a routine for comprehension. She's also written Keys to Vocabulary, I took the training over, actually in October. And it's the kind of program that has a routine more than a set of things you should work on, and so it'll fit really well with Deerfield. So like to do the training for the staff in regards to vocabulary instruction. Language Structures, which is grammar, syntax, and semantics, that is through Simplify Writing and the Grammar Program and Listening and Speaking components of our competencies. Verbal, reasoning, how kids make inferences, how they understand language that's not literal, like metaphors, and lots of strategy and skill instruction, the graphic organizers from Keys to Comprehension. And we're going to do some ongoing PD for Keys to Comprehension. One of our survey questions was, how many of you have taken the training for Keys to Comprehension? And eleven people said, I have. And then, then we said, what else do you need? And nine of them said, a refresher course. So we know that we need to do that.
I like Keys to Comprehension.
Yeah, 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 many teachers are using quite a few of the components, but still said they'd like a refresher. So that is in the works. And then the final, the final one is literacy knowledge, so just different kinds of genres and print concepts. A lot of that happens through classrooms, the library, different Read Alouds. This is the word recognition strand with the three areas of phonological awareness, decoding, spelling, and sight words. We have some programs in, in place for those areas as well. The younger grades have been using the Hegarty program, which is a K through two program for manipulating sounds like, say sunset, now say sunset, but don't say sun. And it gets more and more refined with individual letters being split out rather than just words. They are using Foundations Program for phonics and for spelling at the younger grades, decodable readers. So the kids are getting to read texts that matches the skill they've learned. And then the Foundations Program also has a sight word program built into it. The older kids, in many ways, is, it's more foundational literacy for them, especially as they get into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. If they don't have those skills, then we need kind of above and beyond what, we can't use Foundations from third grade for an eighth grader. So we have some other options, we have, I have quite a few different remediation programs for decoding multi-syllabic words and commonly misspelled words and that kind of thing. There's also Words Their Way, which is being used in fourth, fifth grade. Fourth grade this year used Foundations to continue finishing the program from third grade. So that's shifting a little bit in the upper grades, but we do have a lot of options. Oh, can you go back one second? This is really important, Amanda included this. Pieces lead to fluency and comprehension. So our professional development needs based on the staff survey are listed there on the left-hand side. Letters is a program that's free through the state, many of our teachers in K through five have taken it or are taking it. It's a two-year program, it's pretty extensive, but it's based on the Science of Reading and it covers all the areas in the box.
I've been administrative too, taking it, Lisa's taking it.
And Lisa's taking the administrative course.
And I tried, but I failed.
But you promised that you would do it with me?
Yes, I did, I promised, you never would, I promised.
I'm not going to let you out of that.
I know you're, I appreciate that.
So we need to do the updated Keys to Comprehension PD, introduce Keys to Vocabulary, which I suspect will be the following year. We need to do ongoing PD for Simplify Writing, there's a few modules that we haven't covered yet. And share with the staff what the Science of Reading and the Science of Writing are and the instructional practices that are aligned to them. Specifically for Simplify Writing, teachers would like these pieces. One of them is more strategies to support struggling writers, which is actually the module that we didn't do yet. It's very specific about how to differentiate instruction. Tools to assess and give feedback, now we have the pre and post-assessments. And there's also another module we didn't get to, which was conferencing with students. How to integrate grammar and conventions instruction, which was something that we did talk about, but I think it takes practice, it is in one of the modules. And I think creating some lessons with integrated grammar instruction will, will help teachers to make that next step. We're going to talk about how to pace and schedule, that will be an ongoing conversation. They wanted time to collaborate and prepare their lessons, and they wanted more student exemplars and model texts. So I'm thinking, they do, they do provide quite a few exemplars, so maybe people hadn't found them. But if they did, then we can also use the SAS exemplars.
You're also, I mean, as you're doing the program, you're going to have students with the exemplars.
That's true too. Yeah, yeah, they do provide a, a level one, two, three, and four exemplar for every type of writing for every grade level, so. So we're hoping to respond to that. So that kind of ends the part about the Science of Reading and what we're hoping to do and where we're at now. Do you have any questions about that?
So those programs that you had mentioned, those are kind of used to back up like the Science of Reading, they're not, that's not the actual program, right? The Science of Reading is not an actual program, is what you said. So those other ones that were listed out, those are what you're using to support that, okay, all right.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm curious about the cost of the programs, are some of these free, some of the, like which ones are free and which ones are not?
Well, we actually already own all of them except for maybe Keys to Comprehension and Keys to Vocabulary, but many of the teachers have taken it.
Yep, and the Foundations Program is something that we've had for years that follows it nicely. And Hegarty is newer, that came just this year, and I, I did not order that, I, I don't know.
I think it was here last year.
Last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And we spent, we used a lot of our extra money to purchase the readers.
Decodable.
And then the decodables are new, yeah.
Yeah, we started at one grade level and then they liked it, so we built, we, we slowly built that library.
So as far as the future, it sounds like you don't have any costs in the future. I mean, you've got, at, at the end of three years, you're going to have to renew the, the writing one.
The licenses for that, yes. Otherwise, I think that many of the teachers have the Keys to Comprehension book, and Amanda and I have both taken the course, and so we feel like we can share that training with people. I've taken the Keys to Vocabulary course, I think it was four hundred dollars or something to take the course. And I, I'm not sure that you've taken it yet, and we haven't determined the Keys to Vocabulary.
Oh, no.
The one I took is four through eight, so we do have to do a little more exploring for the younger grades.
So it might be cost for you guys to get trained, but then you can train the teachers. We could, and that's the cost of the books.
The books, yeah, yeah.
You know, and the Foundations Program too, I mean, everything's updating. So in time, you know, new teacher manuals will have to happen, some of the new teacher manuals are old, but yeah.
I was going to ask, so that, you had mentioned the update with the pre and post-assessments, is that, is that update part of the?
It's all online.
It's all a part of this.
They just keep sending us stuff, they're like, now here's the spelling program, now here's the pre-assessments.
And we've purchased those licenses.
The online stuff.
Yeah.
No, right, yeah, yeah.
I think there's some consumables for Foundations, and there are some consumables for Wilson, which is a more individualized, small group intervention program. But they're, they're not significant.
So are the, are the students, do the students have any actual books for any of these programs, or is it all online stuff?
Well, Simplify Writing is online, but it, it can be printed out, and for most of the younger grades, that's what's happening. They're getting things on paper because we printed them. Hegarty is a listen and respond. Foundations is a program that has like some cue cards, and like kids have whiteboards and letter tiles and manipulatives to use, so.
And then all the decodables are all books that go along with the skills that are being taught.
Most teachers have so.
We're working on.
For the kids, they put all that stuff in a writing folder, you have access to it, sorry Amanda.
No, 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 yeah, yeah. I think we're working on trying to get a few more decodables over time for everyone.
The vocabulary, there's, there is a workbook that comes with the Growing Your Vocabulary.
There is, and what we found though is that because it's so expensive, the sixth grade books are, have only been, they've used lessons one through ten, and so they're going to pass it on to seventh grade, and they're going to use eleven through twenty, which is fine because it's teaching different prefixes, suffixes, roots, and bases. And it doesn't matter necessarily that they learn them all because they're learning them at, in, in depth. So that book will be moved on, the eighth grade teacher has her own supplies, and will purchase new books for the sixth graders. So that's a real cost savings as well. I think those books are like eleven or twelve dollars each, usually buy fifty of them.
It's a lot better than textbooks that were like, what, fifty bucks each?
Yeah.
Back when I taught, right? Way more now.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, in the hundreds, yeah, in the hundred, yeah. All right, you want me to go to the competency?
Sure, so. Right now, the middle school has seven competencies. And in regards to conventions, it was built into the writing competencies, and they felt that they needed something separate. They wanted to have a way to grade just conventions. And so we had a lot of discussion, and finally, I met with the ELA teachers at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We looked at the standards and the common core for conventions. And using that, they made decisions about how to write it and put it into our framework. And so that's what's in front of you. It's sixth grade, then seventh grade, then eighth grade, they all start the same with demonstrate command of the conventions of standard English capitalization, punctuation, spelling, grammar usage, when writing and speaking. And then underneath it, they all have specific grammar skills related to that grade level that connect to the competencies that are aligned with the lessons in the Simplify Writing for grammar. So they have that, that material there for teaching. And then it's a specific punctuation type of skill depending on which grade level, and then they all have spell correctly. So once the teachers made a decision, I typed this all up so they could look at it, I made sure that this is the standard that it's aligned to. And then we presented it to all the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade middle school teachers and case managers. So it's science teachers, social studies teachers, et cetera. And everyone had a chance to look at it because they use it for grading, if they're grading a social studies paper or a science paper. And everyone agreed that it was acceptable to them. I sent it over to Amy Parkinson, who looked at it and said, yes, this is, this seems just fine. Kristen took a look at it and said, okay, this looks great. And so the last step is for you guys to see it and digest it and see what you think.
And your curriculum is coming up.
Yeah, we're, we're going to present it next year, hopefully earlier next year.
It's supposed to be this year, but we pushed it off a year. And I, we talked about it as an administrative team, and I think it makes sense to start using that and then spring it with your curriculum next year.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we can let Amy know that she can get it put into Alma, okay.
Okay.
I do think you have a spelling mistake in seventh grade though.
In seventh grade, a spelling mistake.
Dan Dangling last words, misplaced Dan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there it is, Dan Dangling. Thank you for finding that. It should be and, yeah. Thank you.
Wow, that was, I'm pretty quick with that one. For a science teacher, not bad, not bad.
I'm an avid reader.
I went to my son's medical assistant graduation last night, and on the board in big, big letters was written celebration, C E L A. And I, I kind of walked by the board to see if I could find a expo, and I was going to go tell the instructor, and I was like, just, just don't look at it. Anyways, thank you for that. The last thing that we have for you is kind of a next step, our goal. Almost there. Yes, yes, okay. So our goal is to continue to promote student success in literacy using evidence-based instructional practices. And we feel the best way to do this is to create a literacy planning team, which Kristen is on board with. And it will involve all stakeholders across the school to have input into developing this plan. There's a protocol for it, there's a format for it, there's guidance for it. It comes in stages, the first is to evaluate what we're currently doing in about six or seven different areas. Then to develop some improvement goals and an action plan, prioritizing those areas and then starting to implement. And the goal would be one to probably more likely three years. You try to pick one or two of those main areas to affect change in. And the areas are core instruction, intervention, assessment and data use, and professional development.
It came from your work with Jo- Joan Sedida.
Joan Sedida, yeah.
Yeah, the Keys to Literacy, is that, yeah.
Yeah, she does a lot of presenting, like I think she works extensively in Ohio, and you can find all sorts of information from her and videos. And so this was something that I'd come across. The Letters book also, the teachers are using for the Letters training, also has some information about literacy planning teams. That's more geared towards the younger grade, so we may end up combining those, I'm not sure. Well, I think Kristen's hope is that we can find some people interested before school ends, so that we can get some work started over the summer.
So how is this different than what you've done in the past? I mean.
I don't know, because I wasn't here.
So I mean, was it only like the, like the literacy curriculum committee? Was it, was that the only thing that was done? Or, I mean, like how, because you obviously, we've always been looking at the data and checking it out, I'm just curious. It sounds like a great idea, but I'm just wondering how it's different. This is going to be really, like, how often are you going to meet?
Yeah, I think that, I think that a lot of those decisions are going to be made when we pull ourselves together and look at what's expected of us in front of us. I think the goal is to be able to incorporate the best evidence-based instructional practices from the Science of Reading and Writing, right? And so we have some things in place, but there's always room for growth. And we know that as we started to write the curriculum, that there were pieces that we knew we needed to build in. But you can't just build it in and then say here, right? There has to be some kind of a systematic way to approach a change like that. So that's the, the goal.
Yeah, so it sounds like the curriculum committee was more like, this is what's going on, everything's good, but this is more at really looking at changes. And then if there are changes in the, you know, the status of literacy or new ways of teaching, then you're thinking about how can you implement that into the school.
And I think our curriculum will.
It's more proactive, I would say.
Well, yeah, and I think our curriculum will reflect what we believe are the best instructional practices. But you can't, without instructing people and offering PD for folks, you can't really expect them to do that, right? So.
It's aligning some of our practices and, you know, K through eight, and just taking a look at filling some of those gaps that might be out there that need to be filled. It also will support the work that's being done at the, with our MTSS Tier One team, we're doing a lot of, there was a lot of, from a survey we did a couple of years ago, there was a lot of people that wanted some more PD around literacy. And so that's something we've been working towards as well, so it just kind of all came together. And our next step is to figure out how do we put this in place? And we've got some enthusiastic literacy folks, so.
Thank you for letting us come and share information with you.
I want to say, I love that you're using a writing program that goes K to B. Consistency is so important, that the kids learn things, you're doing it the same way, so.
I can't wait till the fall, when the kids get their new, the teachers get their new kids, and the kids are like, oh, yeah. And the teacher confidently say, yes, you did see this, right?
Right, right.
When they say, no, I didn't see this, no, you did see it, because they often forget, so, thank you. But Kristen's going to share this with you, but feel free to reach out to Amanda Rye if you haven't. Thank you. But um, Kristen's gonna share this with you, but feel free to reach out to Amanda Rye if you have any further questions. Awesome. Thank you.
Is this your water? Is this your water? I heard lots of Amber, so I'll fill you in.
Okay, alright. So the next thing we have is the agenda review.
Yeah, I have one. Under um, eight A, we need to add a conversation about solar. Um, about some email correspondence that I received about our solar project. That's all I had.
And the next is review of correspondence. I don't believe we had any. Business facilities update.
Do you want me to just talk about what was there? Um, so Chris forwarded a landscaping contract. And typically we wouldn't put bids and quotes in the drive for public, but we only got one. So that's why it's in there. Um, he did reach out, reach out to several companies and they didn't, either didn't respond or didn't have a quote for him. So um, but our current vendor is the one that um, that gave us the quote in the contract, which is good news. Because we have um, we've had them for quite a while and they're doing a great job. So um, and I think it's a three-year proposal, if I remember correctly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Chris would be looking for you to approve um, our landscape company for the next three years.
Do we know um, how that number compares to, cause I know it's the same company, the same scope, I assume, so.
It is. I didn't get any, I know. He didn't pass that on to me and I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah, I can, I can look though at what we budgeted and see the difference.
Is it something that we? Need to approve tonight without that number?
Um, I mean, it's the only one we got, so.
That's true.
I don't think we have a lot of, and they've been really good to us, so I wouldn't anticipate that it was a big change. But I don't think Chris included that.
Assuming that nobody else bid on it, I assume it's because the number that it's being contracted for is.
It could be, cause they usually check that, right?
So, yeah, we're probably getting a good deal, yeah.
I don't know that.
No, twenty-eight you said?
Yeah, the third year.
I think it's because it's actually, it's actually maybe a two-year contract. Cause it's like, I think it's half year, then full year, then half year. Like if you look at it.
Oh.
So they're figuring the summer work doesn't count.
Right, right. So that, that must be in the prior contracting. So it's actually a two-year contract spread over, you know.
Three years, but two years worth of a full season or whatever. Yeah.
That's why the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven weekly turf maintenance is twenty-four mowings. Cause it's like doubled over there.
Right, that's, that's like the full year, yeah. I think that makes sense.
So I move that we will accept the landscaping contract.
Yeah, I'll second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Um, so I have some modular updates for you as promised. Um, they, so the Amber did talk to Skia Vee and she indicated that, that from the numbers they got back to replace carpets. It would increase the lease price by three hundred dollars a month. So I know the board last time was thinking if it went up, the lease went up, you probably wait to replace the flooring. Um, so if that is still the consensus, um, we do need a motion to renew the lease for one year. It expires in July, June thirtieth, I think.
Should we wait until we check on that other?
We can, yeah. Um, so Canon asked me, so everyone knows. Um, if I would check with attorney Egger to make sure that we would need to put that on a warrant article and that the board, you know. Cause we're even like, he was saying it's a trailer and can be towed away. So does that make, that make it different? Um, so I'm gonna check.
Qualify as property, you know.
Or a building if it's, can be wheeled away. So we just wanna.
Need a warrant article and then we don't have.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have surplus and it's something that's gonna.
Yeah, and there's time. It doesn't expire till June thirtieth, so. Yeah, I can do that and I'll let Amber know um, that I'm checking with him and I made a note to do that, so.
Then we'll just add that to the next.
Yep, sure. Yep. Sounds good. Alright, um, there was also um. Rough numbers um, in the drive for the um, four units that um. I think Canon, you had asked Chris to check on that just to see what it would be, so that we sort of had an idea. If we did end up buying them and those had to be replaced, what type of a cost would we be looking at? Um, and just having that information to try to make sense of whether it's a good idea to buy modulars. So was it seventy-nine, something? Yeah, seventy-nine thousand two fifty. For, for four. Yes.
And that doesn't include. Electrical controls, balancing the system. So there's more than, it'll cost more than that.
And we would obviously, if we, if the time comes, we wouldn't be able to hold him to these prices, but at least we sort of know a general idea.
Cause it's not something currently that.
Nope.
Has to be.
Correct.
It's just.
Yeah.
If.
Yeah.
So we know in the future.
But the units are old and they've just been um, having parts put, thrown at them. Whereas they're, they're suggesting that if it were, the Granite states that if it were on, um, you know, if they, they'd make the recommendation to stop putting parts and just replace them. So.
I think that helps inform your decision on whether you, you might wanna put some money aside in the, the repair trust too. That you could plan ahead, like if these failed, we wanna make sure we've got enough money to replace those in our trust fund.
Do we have an idea of how much that extra stuff that's not included would cost?
No, I don't think so. I think they gave us any firm numbers.
Electrical gets a little pricey.
Yeah.
Yeah, the um, refrigerant. Cause they have to.
I know, you know me. I would never do that. It was a joke and then I realized it's a very poor joke.
Yeah, I'm surprised. There's quite a few exclusions there.
Yeah, there's an awful lot.
Yeah. I wonder, is it because they can't give us prices on that stuff?
Maybe on the electrical portion, but balancing of the system, I assume that's something.
They would do that. Probably.
That's probably pretty. Right, yeah. Or he'll hire that out, yeah.
We'd be probably doing this in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we don't, you know, Chris isn't here, so the, there, he may have asked them in terms of trying to save money. Say, hey, I'll put up the dust partitions and to try to save money. He'll do that stuff himself, cause.
Fire alarm wiring.
But.
It was a good one.
You're punchy tonight.
Missy, do you know how much it costs if somebody comes in with an air conditioner? Do you need to depend on size?
To the transfer station? To, no, it doesn't depend on size and this is all not my doing, but it's ten dollars for an AC to come in. Uh, refrigerator, freezer, AC, um, a water cooler or dehumidifier. All of those have.
So that's not expensive at all.
Huh?
So that's not expensive at all.
Those are commercial.
No, but this is the. No, the select board, um, should probably say this, but they need to update their.
Yeah, I doubt they're gonna take a commercial for.
For ten dollars.
Forty bucks, yeah.
Extra TV too. It, it, everything is outdated. The pricing is outdated. Yeah, because, you know, it costs more to get rid of.
Get rid of, I'm sure.
So. Let's not mix the two boards.
Yeah, it was um, I had it in the last, in the last one. It was.
I was gonna say, wasn't it like thirty-eight, thirty-nine?
Yeah, it was a total of less than eighty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's around eighty.
And then you figure one year of having them, that's a savings of maybe seventy thousand.
Right, so, cause I think we were at like thirty-three for each, so sixty-six, so that's fourteen grand.
Yes.
More in one year, yeah, so. Right, oh, yeah, yeah. I think it just, you know, the only thing to weigh is stuff like that. I mean, in, an eighty thousand dollar repair on those, I mean, given they're not all gonna go out at once either, right? So that's to replace all of them.
This is only for one quote, right? From one company?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's.
That might be.
Something that.
Yeah.
To another quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we were actually gonna move forward, do an RFP.
Right. But yeah, we're, those are just budgetary numbers and like I said, I don't think, you know, they're not all four gonna go at once and we're not gonna replace them until we need to. Unless we, I guess, budgeted to do one per year or something like that, yeah.
I think that was it, all that I had for modulars. Or all Chris had too.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the biggest, the biggest potential cost for maintenance or repairs that we would be facing.
Right.
Did you add the solar in there too? We're gonna talk about.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Forgot. Um, so we, I received an email from our solar company. Um, as you know, that's been dragging on um, for quite some time, for one reason after another. Um, the latest, what we thought was potentially gonna be an issue was um. The electric company uses an outside vendor to do the, the system impact study. And when Chris, or when the solar company called to schedule that, they said we were looking at July. And our solar company said, we have to order your equipment around or close to the end of May to have it and get it going. And have it done when kids aren't in school, or it's gonna delay a year. So the solar company asked if um, I would contact the vice president uh, at the co-op. And you know, sort of, we wrote a very nice letter, like, please help, we're, we're school, we have children here, you know, could you do anything? Um, and they talked to their vendor and um, shared the letter with them and they said that they were willing to make us a priority. So they think they're gonna be able to get it done um, by the end of May to get it to the electric company that, so that their engineers can review it. And then um, pass it on to the solar company. So that is very, very, very good news. Um, the not so great news was after um, the grant amount came in, there's less funding available. And now that we're looking further down the road, prices have gone up. So he is, and what I needed to talk to you about tonight is he, um, his company met and their board decided that they were gonna have to. Increase the, help me with the wording Ellen, purchase for kilowatt? Is that what it is? Yeah. Um, there's still, their increase is still less than our next bid. Because that was one of my concerns is we had people bid on this and I wanted to see, so Amber looked it up and that. Even with their increase, it's still less than the next bid was, so.
Plus I'm sure the other companies would have changed.
When they knew the grant was less, correct. Correct. Yes, so um, they did, he did ask me if I would be willing to bring this before the board for action. And offered if you had any questions or you wanted him to come and speak with you, um, that he would be willing to do that, so.
I mean, like Kendra said, I'm glad that there's still money available.
Yeah, the, the funding was a huge issue, yes. And I think the only reason we were um, guaranteed was that even though there was a, a freeze on federal funding and grants. If you had already received um, approval, that money wasn't taken away. And we had already, our grant had just been approved, so that was really lucky um, that we were able to secure that. And even in securing it, there's less and less now for um, solar projects and um, all that stuff, so. Yeah. So it's going from point oh seven nine um, to point oh nine five.
Still fourteen thousand. I mean, I think the other savings was about twenty-three thousand a year.
Yeah.
So.
He's pretty, yeah, he looked at new projections and all of our numbers and it's still over fourteen thousand dollars of savings. Yeah. So the board.
The other part I like about it too is for school and then you can educate kids.
Absolutely.
So I mean, it's even more than just saving money. It's, it's a good educational opportunity.
Cause I forget, now we, you have your solar panels, you have to have a bank of batteries, is that correct? That goes through the solar to the big batteries and then it turns into your electricity in your house? I can't remember.
It goes through transformers, which.
Oh, just change.
Yeah, it changes the voltage down, but I don't think it has batteries.
Cool.
I'm not, I'm not positive.
I think that would have been mentioned somewhere along the line. Yeah. It just goes through transformers.
When you don't have enough, when you're not making enough power, we're still tied to the grid, so we're getting our electricity from the co-op. So it's not like it shuts one off for the other.
Okay.
If you have a power outage, then it automatically shuts off. And that's because you don't want any back electricity going back into the grid.
Right. Yes, okay.
So what, what is the cost to us on this? I know there's grant money, but.
None.
None. No, it's just what we're gonna save, really. And then in the end, if we decide we want to purchase it, that would be a vote that.
We have a power purchase agreement where after, I think it's six years, we can purchase it if we want. And what they do is they figure out how much it's worth at that point.
And that, then that we would just be getting a better.
We would get all the savings, yeah.
But you're also opening yourself up to the headaches. It's our responsibility to take care of it and do the maintenance and all that stuff. Right now, build a wall of that.
So we do need board action um, on, because this would be a contract change order.
Well, I move that um, we, what would, what we say, we would change the contract to uh, point zero nine five energy purchase. That we accept that.
Yeah, you could just, yeah, accept the change order that increases the kilowatt per hour to point oh nine five.
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for reminding me, Missy. I almost went right by that. Alright.
Alright, so. Twenty twenty-five update, end of year spending.
Yes, so I um, Kristen and Brian put together a document. Um, and then I added at the top what your estimated balance was so that it was all on the same page. So at the top, um, your estimated fund balance is right now four hundred sixty-six thousand. Uh, Amber did make a disclaimer that at the very end of the fiscal year, you do have to reconcile health and dental and special ed transportation. So it's, it's pretty up to date, but there is a reconciliation, so that number will change a little bit there. Um, and then if anything last minute comes in. And also keep in mind that your warrant articles um, are two hundred and fifty thousand for building repair and ten thousand for equipment. So that leaves a balance of estimated um, two hundred and six thousand dollars.
We still have to take care of the health and dental and the special ed.
Yes, yep, any reconciliations, yeah, yeah.
Wait for that and then we decide how much if we wanna return to the tax.
Yes, so the, there is a request for um, spending that. So we froze purchase orders May fifteenth-ish. Um, and then when we start getting an idea of where we stand, typically the administration will come back and say. You know, if you could approve further spending, it has to be, all the purchase orders have to be in by June sixth in order to get it done to close the books. So these are the requests from the administration. Um, there, so our Eureka quote came in higher. Um, so the total for the purchase is ten thousand seven thirty-two. There is some money in the budget next year that's part of that could be offset, or we could just purchase it all from uh, the fund balance.
It will be, and it's, we tried to get it in, increase the math line, but because we ended in a default budget. We, they went right back to what, what they have this year, which I think is about eleven thousand. But they had requested quite a bit more money to um, pay for their Eureka.
So how much, how much is Eureka altogether? Cause are you asking for ten thousand seven hundred to offset what?
No, no, that would be how much we would need to, to uh, purchase what we need for next year. Um, it is ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, it is ten thousand seven hundred dollars.
So that's kind of like what it would be every year, I mean, my goal.
Approximately, okay.
So, so Eureka wasn't in the budget before?
It has been in the budget, but.
We have a default budget.
We end up, yeah, we end up in a default budget every single year, so when we transition from Eureka to Eureka Square, there was a cost in purchasing uh, materials for Eureka Square, which includes workbooks for students and the digital platform for teachers, um, and so every year there'll be a cost for the workbooks. Uh, and every year there'll be a cost to keep the digital portion out. And the same thing with Big Ideas at the middle school, there is a cost for the digital package, I think the digital package is two years at the middle school. So, um, the math team did put in budget for next year and an increased amount to offset the cost of Eureka, what that would be. Um, if we didn't pay for some of this out of surplus this year, our entire math line would be completely spent on Eureka, the needs of Eureka for Eureka next year. So when you end up in a default budget, we end up back at this year's, instead of what they need for next year.
So this ten thousand seven thirty-two is literally the, the upgrade to the squared, that's all?
It, it is, all, all the materials that we would need for, for grade, so if you'll, can you see grade K? You know, they, we need, um, this is the uh, digital bundle, and then grade one includes the, uh, includes the books in the digital bundle that they need. Uh, the quantity, we need forty-eight, cause we have approximately forty-eight, it, it, it might go up a little bit, but we have some books from this year that we might be able to, so they're reusing everything they can. Um, Jamie and Danielle went around and asked everybody, like, what do you have, that we can use this year for next year? Like, you know, we have about fifty-four students coming up to whatever grade, you've got three books left over, okay, so now we need to order fifty-one for you because you've got three books left over. So they did all of that work, and then, um, this is actually less than, they, they, Jamie did a nice job negotiating with the sales rep, who was like, alright, tell me what your bottom line is for your budget, and she's like, well, we're school. And in the past, um, Cannon, we use ESER money to, to pay for a lot of this, a lot of this stuff that we, a lot of the materials we needed for our Eureka program, we used ESER money last year to even put Eureka into our, U- Square, into our school. So when that money is gone, now we don't have Eureka, um, ESER money.
So Eureka's not in the budget at all?
Uh, it is to a smaller amount, um, but not to, to ten thousand dollars, I, 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 so, so.
Yeah, so I guess it is, um, trying to figure out how much of Eureka is already in there? Cause do we need ten thousand, or we need the difference between that and what's in there?
Mm-hmm, you, yes, you could, they could use some of the money in next year's budget, so, do you know what the offset is? Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Can I move to the next thing, so we can go through, explain everything?
Yeah.
Um, the next thing are the ripple journals that um, have been used in the health and wellness class. He's using them this year and loves them for the students. Um, so if we can get those for him for next year, the total would be um, two thousand eight hundred fifteen to, to get all the students, um, the journals.
So our health and wellness budget is usually about two hundred to two hundred fifty dollars, and that's how much our wellness teacher has to spend on supplies for um, sixth and eighth grade. Every year we try to increase that amount for him, so he can purchase more things. Um, we found these ripple journals at the end of last year. Um, and, and I, we actually were looking to purchase them perhaps for advisory, for our middle school advisory. And once uh, the staff, the teachers looked at them, they're like, you know, this would be really good for, for our, for Russell Young, our health and wellness teacher. So I showed them to him and he's like, yeah, let's do it. I had ESER money, I used ESER money to purchase the initial purchase of these, um, he's used them all year long to work with the students. Um, and um, I reached out and said, hey, if you want them again next year, and he's, so I had originally put them in the budget, we ended up in the default, so I lost all of that money that was lost out of the default budget. So he's back to two hundred fifty dollars, so he has no money to spend on anything.
So, so what are these journals?
Um, so there, there's a, each journal, sixth grade has explore and share, so um, it kind of follows a continuum from the very beginning of the year to the end of the year, and there's units that he's using that supports, so the kids can write in them. Um, there's like maybe a journal prompt question that they would answer, I, I should, I could, they're down in my office, I could have, I should have brought them up. I can run down and get them, like, see what they look like, but they're just, um, just kind of guides, the discussion with students. Uh, it helps, um, support what he's trying to teach them in, in health and wellness, um.
And we use things like that in um, Magnet and PASS, and they're great.
Yeah.
They have, it's their own thing, they can, it becomes their own.
Yep.
I'm sorry, how often do they have health and wellness class?
Uh, they have it once every three, is it, one every three days, I think, is it, it's a six-day rotation, so he sees them twice in a.
Do, do they have a textbook for that, or, or any kind, so that's the only kind of guiding?
Um, most of the things that he would do with the kids would be like a packet, he would, you know, copy it. If, whatever he's teaching, he would find some materials online, copy it, and the kids would have a packet. So this has helped me, um, with that piece, in terms of cut down on some of the printing costs, um. And um, the kids can work, write in, it's like a, it's like a wellness journal, basically.
Um, next was a request for some furniture, we had three people with um, horrible chairs that asked if they could get new desk chairs. Um, and then Melissa has been looking for a percussion cabinet, and they're extremely expensive. Three thousand dollars, I think, is, was the cost, um, and she is, does not give up easily. So she decided, she found a Cobalt toolbox that looked very much like a percussion cabinet um, that she could fancy up and would work for her, so um, the total for that would be seven hundred thirty-eight dollars instead of like several thousand, so that's her request. Um, and then we've talked about the fencing, um, and then I think Chris and Brian got two different quotes, um. Yeah, okay.
Is this her quote? What's the name of the company? Yeah, and if anybody was thinking about looking local, I think there's something called AQ Fence in town.
Yeah, AQ Fence, and there's Great, Great East or something, fence.
I know Chris has placed a lot of phone calls, some people can't do the work by, this is, uh, cause it's coming out of surplus, that's to be done by a certain period of time. So he knew that going into it, I can talk in terms, I, but I do know he called the number. These two are the ones that he, he has.
Are we gonna vote on these all individually, or?
That's up to the board, yeah, if you want, if you want to, you certainly can. The, some items might be supported and some might not be, so it's not bad to separate them. And I think between the fencing, didn't Brian say one had sort of a coating on it? Like a black coating, and one was just.
I think the first, the first quote was um, option one and option two. One was hot dipped, the option two was hot dipped, hot dipped, and then the um, option one is a mesh.
Was that it, the, the fencing was the last one?
Um, did Brian send you with anything for the last minute?
Last minute chair, yes, we have, um, in our middle school, um, there was a request to do it. Originally, the request was um, to purchase um, a classroom set of, of desks because there's a teacher that has tables that wanted to get rid of the tables, and used to have the tables for, uh, actually, the classroom we were in, uh, for ELA, and she was hoping to move her, um, desks to chairs, some her tables to desks. Uh, and since then, um, we have another teacher who is like, oh, I'll take your tables, you can have my desks. But in the meantime, we would like to replace some of these, their classroom chairs that are splitting in the back, and um, it's, they're not in very good condition, they, they, they take a beating in the middle school. So, um, it is quite expensive, though, chairs are not cheap, and the cheapest that we can find uh, is on Amazon, um, a set of four classroom chairs costs three hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents.
And there's nothing in the shed?
No, we, well, there might be some things, but not enough to fill a class, and most of the chairs have been, to be, I don't think there's ones in the shed or. And, yeah, and, yeah. Um, so that's, i- if we did, Brian does have a, um, a furniture line budget, a budget line that he uses, uh, at the end of every school year, he'll, he has about ten thousand dollars, and he'll say, you know, let me know what, what kinds of things you need for next year, what kinds of things you want for next year, the need is always takes precedence. Um, and, you know, so teachers will say, well, I need, uh, you know, a couple of extra stools, or I need a to couple, he's bought science tables, he's bought, like, there's lots of things that he's purchased over the years, really, uh, does a nice job. I think he has like sixty dollars off his furniture line this year, he's really just spent it all the way down. Um, but the problem is, is that if we did a class set of chairs, that's uh, almost, it's over two thousand dollars just for one class set of chairs. So if we did that for two classes, that would be a little over four thousand dollars, and that would wipe out, nobody could, it would give him no money to work with for the rest of school, so.
And there's two classes that want replaced.
Two classes that want, yeah, chairs.
But all the chairs have to get replaced, it's not.
Um, that's a fair question, I don't, I don't know, I have, I personally did not take a look. Um, but I think that they were hoping to, yes, replace all the chairs off. If, if the board would wanted to approve just one class set, we might be able to piece them, piecemeal it together. Teachers like to have. Let's see, and Ellen, they like to have their, like, you, you want all your chairs kind of looking the same, you don't wanna have three of these chairs or four of those chairs. So if we had surplus that we could use to purchase a class set, we would.
I don't, I don't really. Hey, that's me, but, uh, so twenty chairs would be around seventeen hundred. Based on what you said for the board chairs. So I'm assuming twenty chairs is a classroom, right?
Um.
If you don't really have twenty kids, usually it's eighteen, but in case, is that correct?
I based it off of, um, twenty-four, like, uh, six groups of.
Of twenty-four, cause I mean, I think, I think we're mostly eighteen in each class. Thinking back to what you have for classroom sizes, right? I mean, I know you like to have extra chairs, because you like to set up a little bit of a spot here, you have another spot here, so it's not like you need exactly what the kids are, but. Um, do you need to know this tonight?
The purchase orders have to be in by June sixth, so you have one more meeting, um. That would be cutting it really close for Trish to have to enter all these things.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, I agree with Cannon, it'd be nice to go through and make sure, like, how many are really, really bad shaped, that need to be replaced. And how similar are the chairs we have to similar, you know, to what you buy, they might be very similar, you might not even notice the difference.
Yeah, I, I think we should, you know, get an inventory of, you know, what we, what we need, you know, not want.
And have Chris check out, just to make absolutely sure there aren't any out in the shed that are old school chairs.
Cause there's a lot of stuff in that shed.
Would that be okay?
I, I, at our next board meeting, I, the purchase orders are due by June sixth, so.
Well, we can't, we can't keep getting, you know, last minute stuff that we're voting on. Fire, drill, everything.
So what, what goes on in the room, the classroom that's at the corner near the cafeteria? The one you used to have, you said it was a loud room?
That's a specialist.
So is there any like extra chairs in those types of rooms?
No, they, they, everything they have, they use, they, 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 small, for their small rooms. These kids go in there and work, and they don't have a lot of rooms, I don't think they'd want a lot of extra furniture, you can imagine, it's just like four, plus people in there. Plus, probably have the smaller size.
Down in that particular room, yeah.
Cause they're more the younger kid room, they probably have the small. So I just, I, I, I mean, if you wanna take the chairs off, we can take the chairs off, that was an addition that was added to it, this. Yeah, the Eureka is something that we have talked about in terms of we will not have the money next year to purchase this, and the fence, I think, has been talked about over the course of the last couple of months, so putting the fence out there for the, between the modulators for safety reasons. So those are two things I know that we have talked about as potential use of surplus line. Which is, I don't know if it was ever defined as surplus, but that's, I think the only way we'd be able to pay for them right now. Uh, next year, Eureka, they had budgeted sixteen thousand dollars to be able to purchase Eureka um, and Big Ideas, and then an additional uh, two thousand dollars that they would use for, um, they buy materials, they buy materials for family, for family, uh, math night. Um, out of that line, they, um, replace manipulatives using that line, they get supplies for, for teachers and kids out of that, out of about two thousand dollars, so.
So what's the balance that you're?
Was sixteen thousand, and they have eleven thousand to spend next year.
So you're talking about five thousand dollars, right?
Wait, so we had sixteen plus two, is that, right, sixteen for Eureka, and then you had two for?
No, sixteen thousand was the total budget proposal for next year.
Oh, oh.
Which included all the Eureka, what we needed to purchase Big Ideas, and then, um, what they needed for an additional amount of money to purchase supplies and.
They needed sixteen thousand, they got eleven, so you need five thousand more.
Yes. Which means that we would which means that we would only be able to purchase a certain amount of surplus, and then a certain amount more budget.
Well, so you only need five thousand from surplus?
Yes.
So we don't need ten seven thirty-two, we need five?
If you, if you want, the whole, to get everything we need for next year, it's ten thousand dollars.
Yes, but you have it in the budget, some, some of it is in the budget.
Well.
So we only need five thousand surplus, and then you've got budget money to get the rest of it, is that right?
For, for next year, there's. Yes, we, yes.
Okay.
Kristin, that was not including replacing other.
I mean, it would dip, it would definitely dip into that, my money, yes.
So it would take all of the budget money. So you're saying there'd be no other money in the math line for other math stuff?
So you need the two thousand as well, so do you need seven thousand? Do we move on to the next one, while?
Yeah, um, look, do you wanna just start doing each one line by line?
Yeah, each one, I think so.
Let's do that.
The ripple journals were next.
Okay, yeah, so, um, I guess we'll just vote on each one individually, so.
I, I would suggest to the chairs, that we maybe get one classroom set. I do know that when those chairs break, they are very uncomfortable, they're always getting clothes stuck on them.
Pinch.
They pinch your legs.
Hair, the girl's hair.
Right, they really aren't good, but I think probably if we got one classroom set, they'd be able to get enough for the two classrooms between the chairs that are still fine and the chairs that are bad, that, that would be my recommendations, I just wanna throw that out there.
I, I, I mean, I think that if that's the only thing that we give them to, that they have to purchase, like, within two days or something, I don't think that that's a huge ask, like, I think we could get, cause if we're, we're gonna vote on everything else and if that's the one thing that we give them to do, you know, I think we should inventory it all, cause if they need two full sets, then they need two full sets, right? But, and we just give them one, then, but, but, let's figure out what we need.
My guess is they aren't all broken.
Right, that's what I mean, I think when she originally proposed it, it was, there's a few broken chairs, and they're in.
So in other words, you wanna wait until we.
I'd like to vote on that at the next one, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, I agree, it's, we already have the quotes, and that would be just entering one purchase order, so, that's fair.
Alright.
Alright, so we'll go to the ripple journals.
I, I just know, being a teacher. I di- I just know, being teacher, having something like that is such a great resource. And I do know that students really do like having their own journals, something they can do at the end of the year. They could be very proud of it, things they're writing. I, to me, I think that that's reasonable to ask for this. And he doesn't have any other budget, so this would be like all he's getting.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I move that we um, allow the purchase of the ripple journals for health and wellness at two thousand eight hundred fifteen. Well, I won't leave.
Second for discussion.
You second it?
Yeah, for discussion.
And then discussion, okay.
Discussing?
Uh, yeah, I, I like the fact that they're, you know, like a hard copy printed, you know, they're, they're writing in them by hand. I, I think it's kinda old school and I like that. And I think it's, yeah, and I think it's um, you know, the fact that he only has a two hundred and fifty dollar budget and he doesn't have any other resource.
And he, and he wouldn't be printing, cause believe me, you print a lot.
That's what I was thinking too, is that, there's gotta be some offset here too, right? Like, but it's saving us on printing.
I, um, and they're well received. The, the kids like them and they use them. It's like, it really is no good. Alright.
Yeah, and I, I guess just, you know, I know that it's, it would be tedious to do that type of thing, but you know, if, if there was a, an option for us next time to be like, you know, we think that we spend, you know, five hundred dollars on printing for the entire year.
I can tell you, last year I I purchased a paper, twenty-three ninety-nine a case, I'm now paying fifty-two ninety-nine a case.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's what I mean. So to me, I, right, I agree. So, but to, to the same point about the Eureka, right? It's like, okay, we think we're spending five hundred on printing these materials for these classrooms, so now we're asking for twenty-three fifteen, we're not asking for twenty-eight. You know, there's, because now we're, we're spending money, there's savings on the other end. Um, so I think just, you know, those numbers when they're presented, I would appreciate if there was, you know, the off, the offset cost, you know, of what, you know, what we're spending on the printing part. Instead of just purchasing it outright, cause I, you know.
I think that'd be hard to come up with. I, I hear what you're saying. I get it, but, cause it's also the cost of the ink. So you gotta think.
No, I know, I'm saying, yeah.
You know, it's just kinda hard to offset it, but we would.
Even if it's, you know, two boxes at fifty-two dollars a box of, of paper, you know, it's not, but. Do we wanna vote on it?
The, the other thing that you don't take into consideration, printing, it's not just printing for the kids, it's printing for you as a teacher. Like you come up with a lesson plan and you're like, oh, I like this, you know, and you print it out and then you might think, oh, I just found this, I like this even better. And then you print that out. You know what I mean? It's more than just printing for what you give the students. If he has a book that he follows along and he does it, it's kinda takes care of all of that.
Uh, no, I agree, yeah. Alright, so do we need another motion to vote on it?
No, just, you can just take the vote.
Okay, yeah. Uh, so all in favor to purchase the ripple journals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next is the furniture. The um, three office chairs and a percussion cabinet. Do, do we wanna discuss this at all, or?
Alright, I, I move a motion, so many seconds, if we can discuss it. Okay, I move that we um, purchase the furniture items that are listed here, the desk chairs and percussion cabinet.
Second for discussion?
I think the three office chairs, definitely I would approve. Um.
What does she?
I don't know about a percussion cabinet, but.
Does she have the drums out, you know, out in there?
Uh, no, she has a cabinet right now, but it's falling apart, so she looked to see um, to replace that cabinet, what it would cost and it's thousands of dollars and it, it's falling apart. Cause it's ma- it's made of wood, um, and so then she started scouring around and found this at um, the surplus, some sort of surplus store and I went in and pretended to purchase it so it could get the shipping for you, cause I knew I think it would cost a lot of money on ship, so. So she would just replace the furniture that's falling apart, which is a particular piece, like, which metal might rust, but it won't fall apart necessarily.
Okay, so uh, like how large is this cabinet?
Uh, I have a picture of it. It didn't, it didn't print.
Oh, it didn't print, yeah. But if you can just tell me like how.
Do you think I, I can? I did go shopping for it.
The other one will be thrown away, right? Okay.
Yeah, I would say it's just something she really, it sounds like it's something she needs. The other one is falling apart and I love the fact that she took the initiative.
Right.
I mean, I think that should be encouraged, so.
So is this one, oh. So this is brand new from Harbor Freight?
Yes.
Okay, brand new, yeah. It looks pretty good size.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you have the mentions right there. The top right next to what you.
Forty inches by twenty-two inches.
Only by twenty-two.
Oh, me too.
And that's twenty-two.
So.
The drum's gonna properly fit in the?
That was saying, in terms of a percussion cabinet, what fits in?
It might not be all the drums though, it might be other things.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think, I don't know exactly what she has stored in there.
It might be like the cymbals and the sticks and probably not the actual drum.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, that would never.
That wouldn't fly.
As long as the other one is getting thrown away, I, I'd be for it. I just, I think that there's a lot of stuff in some of these classrooms, so. As long as we're getting rid of the other one. For it.
That's a good question.
So, alright, um. All in favor of purchasing the three desk chairs and percussion cabinets, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, next is the fence.
We'll stop to wait for the third quote, right?
It, it came, so the quote that we have are between four thousand and ten thousand dollars. If the next quote came more than ten thousand dollars, then it would just, it wouldn't even be considered, so. I don't know if you wanna have a, a, if you wanna give a top amount of, you know, not to spend more than, or.
I'm interested to know if he contacted the other ones we discussed. Great East or AQ, cause they're local to Deerfield.
I, like I said, I know we told a lot of people, I know that he, it's hard to get people even to come to school to give quotes, so um.
Yeah, well, it looks, after reading the American Fence one, they didn't even come out. This is, uh, you know, they said a safe visit would be necessary to provide a firm price, so they didn't even come out, but. Um, I guess, I'm just wondering what the, I mean, that's a huge difference between
Hmm.
the two quotes. Um, American Fence gave two options. Quote two only has one option, but it's, you know, almost double.
Right.
So. So I would throw that one out. I'm very familiar with American Fence. I, I've purchased stuff from them all the time, so.
You, you have a difference between the option one and the option two? I mean, the difference is what one is solid, it's gotten us?
Yeah, I mean, one's commercial grade. I think if uh, I think if we decide to do it, I think the thousand dollars would probably be better for a commercial grade, uh.
I agree with that.
So could we approve option two from quote one? Contention on it, another quote that the third quote is less or something, you know, I mean, how would you deal with that? They would need to know this probably before.
Would they?
Chris is getting it tomorrow, I think. I don't know.
Can we do something through, like we each look at it and say, well, we're okay with that?
No. Um, Trish, do you know how involved this would be? Like, are there lots of different pieces to this, or like in terms of entering POs? Okay, so if, if we had to wait until July, June third, is it third, fourth? That would be okay? Okay. Do you wanna wait for that third quote?
I'll just call these, I just need to have the companies and those vendors, so I can ask each of them to send W nine, just to be clear.
Well, it sounds like you're, the quote two you're getting rid of, right? Or you're assuming?
Yeah.
And then, so it's really gonna depend. And we, so we like option two, the commercial, so we would just wanna compare that one to whatever the other company.
So could we approve that one tonight? Contention on the other bid doesn't come in lower, but we would then wanna consider as a next.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're, I mean, they're, they do this all the time and measurements. I just don't imagine it's gonna be that much difference, right?
Well, he's just, he just uh, told them, you know, linear feet, what they need.
Right.
They don't really.
But it's not like that's rough terrain.
Uh, have you ever dug anything in Deerfield? It's all rock.
Good point.
But, um.
Yeah, so you're not gonna be able to approve five thousand nine fifty, cause you don't really know that that's the amount, right?
Yeah, so we need a, we need a.
It would be like, yeah, approving option two, not to exceed or something?
Yeah, so why don't, I mean, do, is this something that we, I know we've discussed it, you know, uh, is this something that we wanna do? For, you know, say that, say it was six thousand dollars, is something that we wanna spend six thousand dollars on?
So the idea here is for safety, right, to keep people away from the modulars, to give them more protection?
Uh, I think that was the intention, was to put the, something across so that truck cars wouldn't come in this way.
And people.
The delineators for the other section. Uh, we need to put delineators out there as well. And then the fence in between the, the modular and the. That was the.
And the gates.
If, if you, he did say that he was gonna ask if the first could drop, he did remove the gate. I don't know, if you don't wanna remove the gate, that's.
Where would the gate be? Is that between the building and the modular? It, or is that
Uh.
the gate is for, to actually drive through, right?
Uh, yeah, cause he would, he would have to open it
Right.
and close it.
Yes, I, I remember like a store that would swing open, so that, you know, you got the fence and then there's a door coming in the middle. I think that's.
Oh, like there's like a man door through it?
I don't know, I, I thought that's what one of the things was.
Oh, cause I was thinking that that was a, like a gate over, yeah, over at the um.
The area where you drive through, right? When you.
Oh, yeah, certainly they, yeah, they certainly would have to.
Wanna drop off or whatever and whatever.
So it's a ten foot wide?
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually different. So the first one has a ten foot wide, but the second one has a one four foot wide gate and a one twelve foot wide.
Why, double gate?
Right, so that's two, that's two gates.
So he was gonna ask for the price reduction if we remove the four foot gate between the building and the bond.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't think we need that there. I mean, if that, that's just, we don't really use that, right, to cut through? I mean, I mean, I'm sure people do.
Yeah, they do now because it's open.
Right.
You know, kids come.
But the idea is to kinda close it off, really. Yeah.
Uh, Chris said that he's, sorry, I'm sorry, Cannon, uh, that his reliable fencing is coming tomorrow. And then he did call the Deerfield, uh, a little bit, they were no shovel.
There's two Deerfield companies. Great East and AQ.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I guess three, I mean, three bids, I think is. It is what it is, but, okay, so yeah, I guess that's, that's the difference though with that quote two, is that it's a twelve foot wide gate instead of a ten.
No.
I thought that they were bidding the same thing. I guess I didn't really realize that they're bidding different things.
Yeah, four foot and a twelve foot.
Yeah, I guess we, we should just table this until the next meeting.
Could you just make sure Chris comes to the next meeting, Kristen?
And if he, I, it'd be um, a lot better if, if they were quoting the same thing too.
Yeah.
Yeah, ten foot gate or a twelve foot gate, what does he think is um, necessary? I would think that the, like, cause wasn't this supposed to get run by the fire department too?
And they came.
And they said ten foot's fine, not?
I don't know if we had specifics for them.
Yeah, but that's a good question. Is ten okay with them, or is twelve what they want?
I think Chris, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we need Chris here at the next meeting with information.
Yeah, I think it does, I mean, with the two quotes should be of the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, yeah, we'll table that. If that's all, we need to put on that.
No, no, cause there was no motion, so you're good. I'm just gonna wait.
Alright.
So we're gonna wait on the fence and then are we back at Eureka? And the chairs?
So the Eureka, I'm seeing if you can follow my math here. I, I'm proficient up to fourth, maybe fifth grade. Uh, the big ideas for next year will cost approximately thirty-six hundred dollars.
And that's middle school?
And that's for middle school and algebra. And uh, also an accelerated license for grade seven. So we get grade six, we get a grade seven, we get a grade seven accelerated, a grade eight, and then algebra. Um.
And that's all included in thirty-six hundred?
And that's about thirty-six hundred dollars, yeah, for the digital licenses. We already have the textbooks. Uh, and digital licenses cost anywhere from a thousand dollars to four hundred dollars, depending on how many we get. Uh, so the accelerated, uh, so for example, the algebra, we get about twenty licenses, it's about four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, and then uh, that plus the two thousand dollars that they have for supplies would come to uh, five thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars. If we subtract that from the default budget of eleven thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars, that leaves us with five thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars to spend on Eureka next year. And then if I take the ten seven thirty-two minus, I started to keep that half minus, um.
So I've got five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. Six thousand. So you need, you basically need six thousand to offset Eureka.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So what we would do is we probably purchase, you know, up north and kin- as many kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, we probably could get through most of third grade, the upper third grade, and then uh, we could purchase fourth and fifth grade out of next year's budget, or kindergarten, first grade.
Yeah, whatever you wanna do, just if, whatever you can get up to six thousand, I, and then the rest or order after July first.
So the, this, the five thousand nine fifty-two is the amount that's needed?
Mm-hmm.
So what did you mean by get, get, um, get?
Cause you can't, the rest is in the budget, so you can't order that till July first.
Order this up now.
If you're giving her, yeah, if you're giving her six thousand now, she can order out of this year, some of it. Yeah.
Yeah, but that covers it.
Yep.
Okay, so um, it's okay if I make a motion? Right, so I move that we um, give this a little six thousand from the unbalanced to go toward Eureka materials. I'll second it.
Yeah, she did. Barely.
This has been like three weeks since this.
Lot of stuff out there right now too, it's awful.
Okay, any discussion?
So um, I, from my, sorry.
Go ahead.
I would just, so between uh, six thousand for the Eureka, the twenty-eight fifteen for the ripple journals, a thousand-ish for furniture, that's come to nine thousand eight hundred fifty-three-ish dollars, minus or minus two minutes. So ninety-eight fifty-three is what that adds up to. And then the fence, we will get a better feel for the fence and the chairs as well. If you want me to get a better sense of that.
They have to, they're waiting to vote on this motion though.
Okay.
They got one more motion.
Yeah, so all in favor of approving six thousand dollars for um, the addition, the Eureka? Yep, so all in favor of approving six thousand dollars for, um, the addition, the Eureka? Say aye.
Aye.
Awesome, okay. We'll get the rest for next time and ask Chris to come. Right, next is your, um, you need to take action on retaining funds from this year. So there's a formula, there was a warrant article years ago when, um, the law passed allowing schools to retain funds. But the Department of Revenue sets the formula on how much, how, how you figure out how much you can retain. So this is their worksheet that they send out for business administrators, um, to plug our numbers in. So you retained last year two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the board did. Um, this year, the maximum amount you can retain is one hundred ninety-nine thousand six ninety-eight. So what happens is you have to take action each year on retainage, because it's only for one year. So you didn't spend any retainage this year, so that two hundred fifty thousand dollars comes back into the pot for whatever, to offset taxes, um. You, so you have to vote all over again. So basically, that comes back automatically, so if you want any retainage set aside, you have to vote on how much you want to set aside. I don't wanna confuse you, but you want me to keep going? Cuz I got an answer to your question.
Yeah, yeah, no, you, yeah.
So.
You, you explained it to me before, but
One of the, one of the questions that Cannon asked was, it, can, when we bring that money back in, can we spend it? Or does it have to go, um, to, to offset? So I had asked Amber to contact DRA, um, because the law changed. It used to be you had to spend all of your budget, and it had to be only if you were like, gonna go in deficit, could you use that? The law changed several years ago, that, um, what she got from DRA to confirm was, you have to have a public hearing before you spend it, so it's not like a trust fund. If you wanna spend it, you have to have a public hearing and have people, you know, give the people our opportunity to weigh in on you spending that money before you do it. Um, that's the only way.
Yeah, what I was wondering is if we could allocate it towards, like, a bigger project.
And then it's only one year, so that means that product has to happen, like, immediately, and you're pretty much almost out of time to, you have to pu- post a public hearing in the paper for seven days. Um, so it would be really, really difficult, and if you were thinking about it ne- for next year, you could have a public hearing early on, cuz you'll know how much is in your retainage.
I was thinking about, like, the next really big project, like, the, um, yeah. So I, I didn't know if we could, like, you know, put it in a trust fund just for that, or add it to our building repair.
No, right, I, yeah, I explained. Yeah.
That's it.
That's it. So the action now is whether you want to retain, um, funds and how much you want to retain up to the one hundred ninety-nine thousand six ninety-eight.
And that comes out of the surplus?
Um, no, it's coming, you've already got two hundred and fifty retained. So that comes back in, and you can keep one ninety-nine.
Oh.
Or
Okay.
None.
I don't understand it. Where's that two fifty? Where's it been?
It's nowhere. It's in, it's carried, it's, it's not in your budget, it's not in a trust fund, it's set aside. So the town is able to set aside funds and carry them over. The school was never allowed to do that. So now you're allowed to do it one year at a time, you can carry money over.
So we carried money over from last year?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, yep.
I thought we were sending money back to them.
Yep, whatever's left. So if you, you're gonna, you would still theoretically, if you, if you said, yes, we wanna keep all we can. So we'll call it a hundred, call it two hundred thousand. Um, that means there's fifty thousand left, left that's gonna come back in, and then whatever's left in your surplus will come back in, and that offsets taxes.
It's magical.
Well, it's, people, the perception from people is there's money coming and going, but that's not, that's not really what happens, right? We get our allocations from the, from the town that we need, but then whatever exit, whatever revenue we have, it, it's just all gets figured in to how much has to be raised from taxation, and then we offset whatever we have left, um, for those taxes.
But the retainage money could be used if we were in need of money next year, you're saying?
Yes, that's right. If you had, and, and, you know, overage in special education, a really, and you didn't have enough in your trust fund, or you wanted to use this instead of the trust fund, you post a public hearing, allow people to
It wouldn't have, I'm just, it wouldn't for next year, cuz we won't own them, but, like, if we owned the modulators and we had to replace those, that seventy-nine thousand dollar repair, could that be used?
Could that be used to buy the modulators?
We didn't get a really speci- we didn't ask specific questions. She just asked the DRA, can the board use that money? And the answer was, you just have to have a public hearing before you can use any money. So I didn't, there, it didn't seem like there were
Could be a way out for us, yeah.
That would be cool.
If we had that, if we did that right away and got that done before we renew.
You won't have time to do it this year, though.
Oh.
Cuz you'd have, you have to post a public hearing in the paper for seven days, and then, um, then you can spend the money. I don't, I don't know that you'd pull that off by June thirtieth.
Have our next meeting?
I don't know, well.
First week of June?
I don't know when stuff is due to the paper. It's gotta be in the paper for seven days, so I'd have to find out that, cuz you'd have to have the public hearing before you take any action.
Week to get it in for our next meeting.
It's due like, yeah, it's due in the paper, like, the Wednesday before, and then it gets in for seven days.
What paper does it go in?
I think it just has to go into a newspaper. I don't remember where she sent yours, if it's, I know Pembroke's, we send to the Concord Monitor, I don't know where yours goes.
That'd be great, we could use that money for, to buy it.
By the end of June, it's two hundred fifty thousand floating around in the ethernet. If we could get this in the paper and call for, call for a public hearing to see if the the people allow us to use that money to purchase these.
Right.
Before the contract is up for these, correct? To, before it starts another year.
Yeah, I think it's June thirtieth is the
Yes.
Same as the school.
Do you have money in your budget, though, next year?
Putting pressure on.
I, I don't mind work, I don't mind working, I have to go back and tell Amber what you're trying to do. That's what I'm worried about. Oh, it's, it's your retainage. I think we should try that.
Patty's gonna be really ready for retirement.
Patty, we're trying, we're trying to make
I, it's not anything on me, it's not anything on me, it's just the timelines and making sure Amber has time to do all this and close the books. That's all. So I need to find out some information. Um, and the problem is you don't you won't know the answer to some of these questions before your next meeting, and if you're gonna do it, you have to have a public hearing at your next meeting. So we have to publish it, so you could potentially publish the public hearing, and it's not gonna work.
Well, the thing is, is that we're gonna end up with a significant surplus, so, which, you know, is gonna be pretty close to this number, a little bit less, but, once we spend that other money for the school. So, my thought is that we have the intention to, we, like, tonight, cuz we have to vote on this tonight. Oh, okay, I thought you said we had to do this tonight, okay. Oh, then, I guess.
You need to take action, but you could wait till
I would say even if we had noticed it was a public hearing and it doesn't work out, we could just say, we were hoping to do this, but it didn't work out.
I mean, you could, you could can't, no, you could cancel it. It has to be in the paper, but once it's in, you could, you could post that the public hearing is canceled.
I think it's worth, worth trying, especially since, I mean, how many of our public hearings have we actually even had anybody?
This would be
Bigger.
Be attended.
Yeah, it's a bigger deal, yeah.
And I think baseball season has, uh, slowed people down. Everybody, I know my schedule is insane just because of baseball. It's four days a week. Two, yeah, all the other sports, it's only one or two days a week, but baseball's four.
So long.
Okay, so, you said we have to take action, and
Not tonight.
Okay, okay.
Your next meeting's gonna be fun. You'll have to help me with the agenda to make sure I don't forget any of this. I think I've got notes on everything. Okay.
That'd be really cool if we do that.
Okay, we'll see. I will check on all of that.
Alright, next, high school planning. So timelines, what was that?
So, yeah, so next, in next week, in next week, right, I think, yes, Tuesday, I'll be meeting with, um, Ellen and Cannon sort of review what that process was that we went through to get to, to the school choice. Um, look at the three MOUs, um, see if there are any issues with them when they, you know. I guess what you're gonna have to explore next is if you're, um, content with the way things are, and you want to just go, take advantage of the extensions in those, do you see issues in them that you would like to, like, reopen and renegotiate? Do you only want two schools instead of, there's lots of options that you'll, that you'll discuss and need to make decisions on. Um, so I think that was the consideration, was starting that clock, because those are gonna come due, um, and you wanna be prepared of what your plans are to move forward, so we'll start
The last year of the three-year contract.
Great, yes. So we'll, um, I'll go over things with you next week, and then if you, I mean, you can, if you wanted to start having conversations now to see if there's any consensus, or if you just wanna wait until after our meeting, and you two being the high school reps, bring suggestions to the board. You do, either way.
I think, I think my big question is, I mean, Co-Brown is done for you, it is what it is. Amber, I'm hoping would stay the same.
There's no, we have no one, but I don't, the board would be happy to continue, I'm sure.
But I think Concord's the big issue, because looking at what the price increases have been every year, they've been more substantial than we thought they were gonna be. So I think, to me, that's the big conflict that we need to look at.
Yeah, I agree. I think that, uh, like you said, Co-Brown's charging everybody the same price across the board, so.
It's very straightforward.
And it looks like it's gonna be either equal or less, they're, they're within like four or five hundred dollars for next year with Concord. And Pembroke's significantly less, so I think we keep that option open no matter what. Cuz that's, that's an option for us to save, if people wanna go there.
Students going there.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so my mind is the Concord one, and then looking at the history, then we can bring it back to the board and say, what direction do you want us to take with the Concord contract, and then we can work on it.
Yeah.
What did you, I didn't catch what you said about Pembroke. Did you say we don't have anybody going there?
Um, we have a couple of students, I know next year, I think there were two, did they both change their mind, Kristen?
Oh, they did, really? Oh, fucker.
When, yeah, and the transportation.
Oh, to Co-Brown.
So now, I don't know, if there is none, will they switch back? So we, the kids have, they can still, they're still making, they're still switching. I've had two, um, applications just, oh, they're, it's a one-page form. Um, in the past two weeks of people that wanna switch their kids, um, from Concord to Co-Brown, so it, there will be movement right up until the end, until the fall, we won't, we won't really know where things settle, and
And, um, Patty and I had talked about asking, um, Dale to, to come to the next meeting.
Oh, that's right, yep.
Um, to see if there's any updates with, um, with busing.
So as of, right now, we don't have any eighth graders that wanna go to Pembroke next year?
Not to my knowledge, unless some, they, unless those two switch back if they think there's no bus.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just afraid.
Agree.
Kids choose it, especially since so many people, when they talk about choice, they, their complaints about Concord was that it was a big school, it was in a city. You know, and Pembroke is like the perfect alternative. It's a smaller school, it's more rural.
I was wondering if it was like about the commute, like, are people working, like, heading to Concord or heading in the other direct, I don't know.
Yeah.
But
Do they, is CRTCU offered there?
Yes, the kids from Pembroke go to Concord.
Yep.
And it's included in the cost.
So, I mean
There's really no, there's really no downside, and we looked at it, and, and we had the, they had, we had presentations while through schools, and the kids, honestly, I thought Pembroke took the bus. It was so good, the kids that were there were so enthusiastic, and they were great.
Yep.
You know, but, I, I think it's, I think we're in that transition period, too, where we're like, well, you know, a lot of kids going to Concord, so we're gonna continue to Concord. There's always been families who've wanted Co-Brown, so they're going to Co-Brown, and I
Siblings.
They're just not thinking about the change to Pembroke, you know?
Yeah, it's with, like you said, with older siblings at Concord and
You'd kinda want your siblings all go to the same place, you know, so I was excited that we had two Pembroke.
We'll see.
It's substantially cheaper, it's like four thousand dollars cheaper.
Could be, I mean, I don't know how many ki- how big sports is for a lot of them, but
Well, Pembroke's sports is probably the same, if not better than Co-Brown, you know, so.
Right, but I think a lot of the, yeah, athletes would go to Concord, potentially, yeah, yeah, they're division one for everything, I think, so.
But that's also a bad thing, because, you know, your kids may not, but
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that on for next time again, and I will invite Dale to see if they have any updates for us.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. I'm just afraid that, um, we're not gonna get, if we wait until, cuz if we don't have a meeting in July, if there's any updates on busing, I don't wanna wait till, uh, August, to let people know. Especially if there's flip-flopping right now based on transportation. Give people an opportunity. Alright, uh, committee work, we kinda talked about that.
That was, yeah, same thing.
Alright, informational items.
I don't have any.
Um, I just, I am just gonna mention to me, so people know that, um, Ken and I did go to the joint board meeting, and there is information that we next, so people can read it, but it was basically on how they determine, um, their finances and how they determine tuition. That's really the main thing that we had, so.
Yep. Alright, public comments, I'm in here for that. Uh, do we need a non-public session?
And we need to add small letter C. So you'll just need to, need a motion, and you can read all the
Oh, to go into non-public? Uh, I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Want me to read it? Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
Under, I'm sure, uh, RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, roman numeral two, small letters A and C. A roll call, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Alright.
You're all set, Trish, I got you. Thank you.